Heather.
Good morning, Connor.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. How are you? It's good afternoon in Bhishavon.
Oh, yeah.
Good afternoon, far Bhishavon.
Hmm. No, I'm doing well. Just getting some things set up and we should be good to open up here in a few minutes. Um, I don't remember the names of your colleagues that are going to be hosting with you if you want to go. I don't know if you can admit them or not. Uh, wait, actually, I don't think you can. Let me try to make you.
They will join shortly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will make you a co-host.
Yeah, yes.
So, you should have control. Um, I will like moderate questions and make sure people's mics are off and stuff like that. So you don't have to worry about that. So I'll be around during the whole meeting. Um, and yeah, if you need anything, just feel free to ask me or let me know. Otherwise, I'll kind of just be in the background. Making sure everything is going smoothly. Um, yeah.
Okay, about the questions, uh, I with colleagues have planned that all the questions because there might be too much participants. So, uh, I mean that they can ask questions right from the beginning and they can post it in the chat box. And at the end of the webinar, uh, in the questions and answer session, uh, we will, uh, we will answer the questions that we can in the slot. Uh, and for the rest of the questions, we might compile it in written and share it with them.
Okay. Yep, that sounds great. Um, if you want, you can, they can compile the questions. I can, I can download like the meeting, uh, transcript and send that to you. And you guys can answer it. And then if you give me the answer sheet, I can send it to all the participants. I have easy access to that. So then you, okay, yeah, then you don't have to ask for emails and worry about that. I can just send it to all the participants. So, and that's relatively easy for me.
And in the meanwhile, when, uh, the first session, it will be from my side. So during that session, my other colleagues, they will be compiling the questions from the chat box. Uh, and once, uh, my second colleague, Dr. Yasser, uh, so during that, me and the third colleague, Dr. Afid, will be compiling the questions. So anyways, we will manage that.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, we can, we can, uh, regardless of how the question and answer session goes, I'll be sure to download the transcript and send it your direction regardless. And then, yeah, if you guys end up answering them all or not, it's up to you. But, um, if you do answer them after the webinar is done, feel free to send me the, the document and I can send it off to everyone. So, but we don't have to worry about that, uh, until afterwards. Um, and then, yeah, so I have this presentation. I will start out. It should honestly only take like a few minutes. It's mainly just to introduce um, what the PAC CRN is and then offer them opportunities to join like our LinkedIn group and kind of follow along for future webinars. So, yeah, it'll take three minutes, something like that. And then after or sometime during the meeting, I will maybe interrupt or jump in when there's a bit of a lull and ask everyone to turn on their camera. So I can take a screenshot, um, for a posting. And then when everything is done, I will also share the, we have a really quick survey just to kind of make sure that, um, uh, gather some information from the participants. It's not a, it's not an evaluation of anything. It's really just, uh, have they used like this PC performance, et cetera, in the past? Um, do they plan on using like the materials in the future, things like that? So nothing, nothing, uh, to evaluate or be concerned about. So, yeah. Um, maybe, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Uh, so the, the presentation that you have, uh, shared with me, uh, I think five, six slides. So first you will share your presentation. Uh, and after that, I, I'll be sharing my presentation from my computer. Is that okay?
Yep, exactly. I'll, uh, I'll hand over, uh, I'll hand over the, the control to you and, um, only at the very end, like before everyone signs off, I will, uh, share uh, my links that I need to share, just a couple of them. So. But, uh, yeah, so I think that is kind of it. I will, maybe I'll let people in now and we can, is this not working? And we can start, uh, maybe we'll start a couple of minutes afterwards, just to make sure everybody can file in. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll admit everyone now and then as soon as I am done with my portion, I'll hand things over to you.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Good afternoon, all. Um, I'm not sure. I, I think you can hear me, but we're just going to wait a few minutes to uh, make sure everybody has opportunity to file in and maybe a couple of minutes past, uh, uh, two thirty, we will, we'll start. But, uh, yeah, until then, we will just wait a few more minutes. Afternoon, all. Um, like I said just minutes ago, we'll, we'll wait a couple more minutes, uh, to allow people to file in and then we can get started. But, uh, yeah, thanks for joining and yeah, thank you for your patience. Okay, I think we can get started. Um, thank you all for joining. Uh, we're excited to be able to host this webinar this afternoon for everybody. Um, I want to thank Dr. Fayaz and his colleagues for, they're going to be doing the majority of the, the speaking and presenting. So thank you very much for, uh, for, uh, giving your time for this afternoon. So today we're going to be talking about the, uh, updates on planning commission performance and accompanying tools slash handbooks for the climate resilience. So, um, my name is Connor Lindenberg. Uh, I am a researcher at the U N U in Bonn, Germany. And we host this PAC CRN, so the Pakistan Climate Resilience Network. And I will give you a very brief introduction into what's the PAC CRN is. And if you have not joined or have not checked out our offerings, uh, mainly on LinkedIn, feel free to do so. I'll share the link here as well. And then you'll also have the opportunity to, uh, uh, see that towards the end of the, the webinar as well. But maybe with that, I can continue on. So PAC CRN, uh, main objective, our main goal, uh, for this initiative is to bring together practitioners such as yourself, uh, researchers, stakeholders, working in climate resilience in Pakistan. And so this is kind of our, uh, our attempt, our, our hope to foster collaboration and knowledge exchange amongst yourselves, um, amplifying the impact of the members' work across the country. So key focus areas and maybe just to highlight this initial one. Sorry, I'm just admitting people as they come into the meeting. Key focus areas is this knowledge sharing and innovation. So, uh, webinar such as this is a good example. We host regular webinars, uh, uh, regular trainings. Um, try to do so monthly, uh, depending on the involvement or the, the, the theme of the webinar. Um, and so this is something that we do quite regularly and we'll be continuing to do so, um, throughout the, uh, foreseeable future. And all hosted, free to join online, um, and all, uh, available to watch uh, after the fact. So we have, uh, a YouTube page where we post them, the videos, the recordings of these webinars, as well as, uh, have the recordings available for download as well as any presentation material. And again, I can share that, uh, links with you. And this is available for anyone who wants to, um, access them. Uh, and yeah, this is all with the hopes that it's useful for everybody, for their careers or education. So, sorry, I'm just admitting other people. Uh, furthermore, so this is also an area where we want to emphasize the facilitating of lasting connections. So amongst the practitioners, amongst the members of this PAC CRN, uh, initiative and highlighting progress in climate resilience. So that's something where we want to hope to emphasize, uh, people's work amongst the network. So not just things that we are doing at the U N U, G I Z, G C I S E, uh, U E T. Um, we want to emphasize that everybody, uh, in this network can, can, uh, share different things that they're working on either academia or professionally, or even things that maybe they're not directly, uh, connected to, but find very interesting. Um, under this Pakistan climate resilience umbrella. So, uh, that is just maybe a quick overview of what the PACS are and hopes to achieve. Um, what it offers again, this knowledge sharing and learning. So something such as this webinar, uh, networking and collaboration. So I kind of briefly overviewed that previously. And then the resource access and professional development. And that's also something, yeah, that I talked about with every webinar is available, um, for download for later access. So we really hope that everybody takes advantage of it. Um, this is something that we put a lot of work into and a lot of experts throughout Pakistan have really graciously provided their time and expertise to provide everybody with access to this, uh, information. So it's, it's really something that we have been quite lucky, uh, to be able to foster. And as well as having G I Z, G C I S E, U A Ts, um, uh, full supports. We couldn't do this without their, uh, their, um, um, resources and, uh, expertise. So I can continue on. So, uh, I mentioned the LinkedIn page. This is probably our most active, uh, location where things are taking place. So everything that we're doing is, uh, posted in the LinkedIn page and this is for updates. Uh, any, uh, webinars that are taking place, any newsletters, any, uh, information that might be relevant to the group. So I, I highly encourage you to check out that. Uh, we will be re- releasing, uh, periodic newsletters in the near future. And this is something that we hope, yeah, people would also take advantage of. So if there's any exciting developments in your work in your educational, et cetera, um, we, yeah, encourage you to share that information with us. Uh, you can either post it via the, or message us via the PACS or in LinkedIn group, or you can email us, uh, at our, uh, address and I can share that with everybody as soon as I am finished up here as well. And then again, the webinar series. So this is experts sharing their knowledge, sharing their expertise. Uh, if you feel that you have something to contribute to that, also feel free to, uh, reach out to us. We have, uh, a very robust lineup, um, already. But we're happy to include others and fit you in if, uh, you are, uh, motivated to do so. So we can continue on, uh, maybe just a quick overview of the webinars that have taken place and the ones that will continue. So this is the fifth webinar that we have hosted, the updates on PC performance. Um, up until early next year, we have webinar six, seven and eight planned and then, uh, quite a few more after that. But these are the ones that we have solidified a date and know exactly what, when and where this is taking place. So just a preview of what's to come. And then, um, maybe I'll go back. So, uh, yeah, that's kind of it from my side. So we gave you an overview of what the PACS here and offers, um, what you can do to contribute if you so choose. And yeah, just looking forward to this upcoming webinar with Dr. Fayaz and his colleagues. And thank you again, everybody for joining. So I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Fayaz.
Thank you so much, uh, Lindenberg, uh, for the intro. Uh, I'll now share my presentation. Okay, I think, uh, I hope my screen is visible to you.
Yes, yep, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, good morning from, uh, Vishal, sorry, good afternoon from Bhishavon and I think it will be morning in Germany. Uh, and Assalamualaikum to everyone. Uh, it's, it's my pleasure to welcome you all to this, uh, webinar. Uh, I have three colleagues, uh, over here with me. Uh, I'll introduce them later on. Uh, the first part of this today's webinar series, uh, this series is basically climate and disaster risk finance and insurance. Uh, it's focusing on national, uh, frameworks developed under the planning commission of Pakistan. Uh, I am Dr. Faya Sehmat Khan from the National Institute of Urban Infrastructure and Planning, uh, U T Bhishavon. And I'll be starting, uh, today's discussion by giving an overview of the planning commission of Pakistan. Uh, it's, it's project approval system and how climate resilience is now being embedded in, in public sector planning uh, through tools like Chira, Kara and, uh, CMA and CIMA. So these are the tools that have recently been embedded into the planning commissions, uh, pro farmers. Uh, now move, uh, further, today's agenda, uh, already, Connor and Lindenberg, uh, has welcomed, uh, done the first part of this, uh, session and introduction to the session. So I'll be doing the session one, uh, planning commission of Pakistan and PC pro farmers. For most of you, this, this will be, uh, not a new thing, but for our fresh graduates and new engineers. Uh, I, uh, we felt that, uh, that the, the, we should introduce the planning commission of Pakistan and the PC pro farmers. Uh, this session will be conducted by me. Then the second session, uh, climate and hazard initial risk assessment, which is Chira. Uh, followed by the third session, uh, uh, which is Kara climate adaptation and resilience assessment. Uh, finally, we will have, uh, dedicated questions and answer sessions, uh, for fifteen minutes. And which will be followed by a feedback and a wrap-up, uh, session. Uh, questions will be taken in the chat box. Uh, finally, we will answer, uh, the, the questions, uh, uh, in this dedicated question and answer sessions. And the questions which are left unanswered, uh, we will, we will write up the answers and email that to you. So, uh, the presenters that we have, uh, for today's webinar, myself, uh, we have Dr. Yasser Arfan Badrashi. He is a professor at University of Engineering and Technology. His specialization is disaster, uh, risk management. And then we have Dr. Afidullah, who is lecturer, uh, at U T Bhishavon. Uh, he specializes in, uh, climate risk analysis. Uh, now, the objective of this, uh, session particularly upon, uh, uh, but by the end of this session, uh, we should all be able to understand how the planning commission, uh, functions as the country's apex planning body. Uh, how national project cycle operates, uh, right from the beginning, uh, I mean, at the concept stage till completion, uh, using the PC pro farmers. And how the new handbook, uh, which has recently been, uh, annexed to the, uh, planning commission pro farmers, uh, so the how the, the new handbook on climate risk screening fits, uh, within, within this system to ensure that our projects are climate informed and, and resilient. This context is, is extremely important, especially for government officers, engineers and planners. Because every project, uh, that, that, that we propose are new today must align with these updated national, uh, procedures. Uh, so in, in this context, uh, the, the outline of, of this presentation is just to give you a brief overview of the planning commission of Pakistan and PC pro farmers. Uh, and then the newly, uh, annexed handbook on climate risk screening for policy planning. So this will be done in the first session. Uh, in the second session, uh, we will have, uh, Chira, uh, uh, which is a hazard identification and, uh, exposure assessment tool. Uh, Kara trigger and end that vulnerability assessment, uh, will be for the third session. Uh, so, uh, session one, uh, planning commission, uh, Pakistan and PC pro farmers. Now, uh, here I'll introduce, uh, what is planning commission of Pakistan and what does it do? Uh, so the planning commission, uh, of Pakistan sits at the heart of Pakistan's, uh, development, uh, planning architecture. Uh, it operates under the Ministry of Planning, Development and Special Initiatives, which is uh, in short known as, uh, M O P D N S I. Uh, and it serves as the central body that provides strategic guidance for national development. Uh, it is responsible for formulating, uh, hmm, five-year annual development plans, uh, setting sectoral guidelines, uh, sectoral priorities and evaluating public sector projects. Uh, the commission also serves as a secretariat of the two most powerful decision-making forums in Pakistan. One of these, uh, forums is the N E C, which is National Economic Council. Uh, and the other one is known as ICNIC, which is the Executive Committee of the National Economic Council. Uh, which these committees, uh, particularly the ICNIC, uh, ultimately approves all the large-scale, uh, public investments. Uh, now, what is the mandate and functions of the planning commission of Pakistan? Uh, the planning commission's mandate goes well beyond project approvals. Uh, its functions are, uh, preparation of five-year, uh, and annual, uh, plans that define our socio-economic roadmap. Uh, appraising and formulating development projects in all sectors. Alocating resources under the P S D P, uh, program. P S D P is the, uh, well-known, uh, development program in Pakistan, which is Public Sector Development Program. Uh, then, uh, the planning commission also does the evaluation and monitoring of the ongoing projects. Uh, also it is a, uh, it, it provides policy advice on economic and, uh, development matters to the government of Pakistan. Also, uh, it, it, it does coordination among, uh, federal and provincial agencies, uh, uh, in, in, in development planning. Uh, so on, on federal government, I'd like to mention, uh, that on federal government level, we have the planning commission of Pakistan. And then, uh, in, in, in provinces, uh, we have, uh, planning and development departments in some provinces. And in, uh, two provinces, I think we have planning and development boards. So this is the hierarchy at provincial level, but at federal level, we have this planning commission of, of Pakistan. Uh, now planning commission and what is, uh, what has this planning commission, uh, and public? What is the, the, the relationship between planning commission and public sector projects? So every major public investment in Pakistan, whether it is, uh, like a highway project, maybe a hospital, water supply project, uh, hydropower projects. So all these projects and maybe, uh, uh, climate adaptation projects must pass through the planning commission's approval process. Uh, the commission has standardized, uh, this, this commission has basically standardized this, this process using a set of documents, which is known as PC pro farmers. So basically they are planning commission pro farmers and we have got five of pro farmers from one to five, uh, which I'll, I'll explain, uh, at a later stage. Now, why we, uh, why it was felt that this, uh, process, uh, needs to be, uh, formalized? Uh, that the need was to ensure consistency with national and sectoral policies. Uh, technical and financial feasibility is properly established. Uh, transparency and accountability that how this, this public, uh, money is spent. Uh, efficient resource allocation. So for these reasons, uh, that this process was, uh, formalized. Efficient resource allocation. So for these reasons, that this process was formalized. We have got these five pro formas, PC one, PC two, three, four and five. Now, what does PC one contains? It it contains a project feasibility appraisal and approval. For example, if a project is conceived, so first we need to go for PC one. But in some stages, we first go for PC two. If, for example, a project is of a complex nature. And that needs detailed feasibility study or detailed design. So first PC two is prepared, in which project planning preparation is done. And then it is followed by PC one. So here the number the numbers might be a bit confusing. But in in projects, in simpler projects, we start with PC one. Where feasibility and detailed design is not required. So we go with with PC one. But in complex projects, when we need detailed design and feasibility studies. So first we prepare PC two. And after the feasibility study is conducted, the detailed design is done. So best on that, PC one pro formas are developed. And this is the document which initially goes to the Planning Commission of Pakistan to various forums of of this commission. To various, yes. So once the project is approved, then we have got the PC three pro formas. Which is basically for project tracking. In PC three pro formas, we have got two types of pro formas. One is called PC three A and PC three B. So A basically, in 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 this, you submit quarterly progress reports. And PC three B, you one one submits the yearly project reports. PC four is basically for a completion report and PC five is. PC five is post-completion evaluation. So this is what the PC one pro formas do. Now, as recently, this. Climate resilience part has been embedded to this Planning Commission pro formas. So. Here the question arises, that why it is relevant to link the climate risk screening to these pro formas? So the context is because climate change across the globe. And particularly in in Pakistan is no longer a future problem. We have experienced many disasters in the recent years. Particularly, if we talk about the twenty ten floods, then the twenty sixteen floods, twenty twenty-two floods. And the recent floods in Pakistan. So climate change is is already affecting the infrastructures. And the livelihoods across Pakistan. We are seeing increased flooding, we are seeing increased droughts. Heat waves, glacier melt events. And this this basically, these these type of events, they they disrupt. Supply chains, damage infrastructure and increase costs. Recognizing this, the Planning Commission developed the Handbook on Climate Risk Screening for Policy Planning. This handbook basically ensures that all projects, regardless of size or sector, are reviewed for climate sensitivity. Right from the planning stage. Also, we have this SDG thirteen alignment. Because we are following this, the SDGs, so which is to combat climate change and and its impact. Now. I'll shortly introduce the Handbook on Climate Risk Screening for Policy. For policy development. Now, this handbook is basically developed under Planning Commission Islamabad. Planning Commission has got a Planning Commission handbook. It's basically manual of. Manual for. Public sector projects in the country. So this handbook is basically an enabler to the to that original manual. And this is annexed as an XD to that manual. It supports basically the the manual for the development project, meaning it is not an optional add-on. It is part of the formal project preparation process. So the the Chira, the Kara and the CIMA that we will be discussing in the coming sessions. They are basically now part of the Planning Commission pro formas. If if we are submitting the PC one pro formas to the Planning Commission of Pakistan. So it must be accompanied by this NXT and we have to follow. The climate risk screening using the procedure that has been laid out in this handbook. I've already explained that we have got Chira, Kara, CMA and CIME. Which which has been explained in this handbook. Now, what we do in Chira, it will be explained in detail by a mic colleague. But in this Chira, we do an initial and quick assessment. If a project is identified, so the project proponent must do an initial project climate risk. And in that, if we identify the risk level. We will be having four risk levels, no risk, low risk, moderate risk and high risk. So if we come up with the moderate and high risk. Then what we do, we will be going through another assessment, which is Kara. And we have then a CMA, which assesses and calculates the greenhouse gases emissions. So over here, we can identify. Identify the the emissions in in the project. If we can decrease the emission in this project. And also, we can have, I mean that look for carbon financing opportunities and carbon credits at this stage. Now, this handbook is basically intended for those who design. Appraise and approve public sector projects, including principal accounting officers. Engineers, consultants. And I, as I told you, at provincial levels, the planning and development staff. Its its purpose is to help users identify climate risks. Document document them in in PC forms and propose suitable adaptation or mitigation measures. This structure is is very practical, it starts with the basic terminology. The structure of the this handbook is in in section one, you have got the abbreviations, the glossary and references. Then structure two, it it has got the methodologies. For the Chira assessment, Kara assessment and the CMA assessments. So it is dedicated, section two is dedicated to these methodologies. And then in in the third section, we have climate-proof PC formats. Now, the methodological lineage is, it is basically adopted from. World Bank and Asian Development Frameworks, because they already existed. And this handbook has been adopted from these two frameworks. Help has been taken from these two existing frameworks. But these have been customized for Pakistan, considering our data limitations. Because Pakistan is really a data scarce country. Local governance structures and the types of of climate hazards we face. Such as floods, droughts, blow-offs and and heat stress. Move further, this the climate risk screening. Development screening is the first in in climate and font planning. It basically enables early identification of high-risk projects. As I told you, we have got these three pillars, Chira, Kara and CMA. If a project is identified at this stage, at the Chira stage. The Chira assessment stage, that it has got high risk or moderate risk. So what we do, we do some adaptation measures against those risks. If we cannot identify adaptation measures, then what we do, we forego that project. So that's it from my side. So to to summarize the session one of this webinar. I'd like to mention that the Planning Commission of Pakistan has institutionalized. Climate screening across all stages of project development. This ensures our public investments are not just economically sound. But are also resilient resilient and sustainable. In the face of future climate uncertainty. In the next session, we will explore. First, we will explore these tools and see how they are applied in practice. To screen projects for climate risk. With that, I'll now hand over to Professor Yasser Alfan Badrashi. Will guide you through the Chira framework in in detail. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Mister Laraman Rahim, Assalamualaikum and a very good afternoon from Pishawar. I hope everyone is doing good. My part of this presentation is focused on the Climate and Hazard Initial Risk Assessment. As Dr. Fayaz gave us a very good overview of this whole process. The organization that is responsible for managing projects in terms of their planning. We all understand that this new, it's not a new, but it's a growing trend of climate change. This has the potential to make our infrastructure and other societal elements. To be very weak, vulnerable to these impacts. Because traditionally, these have not been considered in the planning stage or in the designing stage. So once we start with a project without considering these effects. Then there are good, there is a good probability that these climate-induced hazards. Are going to create problems for the projects at a later stage, particularly those projects which are long-term projects. So my portion of this presentation is going to focus on Chira. And I'm going to give you the an introduction to Chira and then the different steps. That are involved in in assessing a project at the very top level. So that decisions can be made whether the project shall go ahead or it needs certain interventions. And this Chira process is basically the first test for a project. Project's viability in terms of climate hazards. And then it, based on this, the further other steps such as the Kira. Is carried out and then adaptation and mitigation strategies are defined. So if we. So what what is actually Chira? So as Dr. Fayaz explained, that it is one of the three nationally-approved tools. The other one is Kara, which is for adaptation and resilience. And the third one is CMA, which is for mitigation. And these basically form the backbone for climate risk governments in Pakistan. These have been made mandatory in terms of their application by the Planning Commission of Pakistan. From the project concept, that is the PCN and the PC one stages. It means that these these assessments are carried out before any approvals are granted or any commitment for funds is done. So if you look at this, this is essential, particularly since it give, this Chira gives us a high-level assessment of. How these climate hazards such as floods or droughts or heat waves. They could impact a project's physical components. But more than that, they also, this Chira also addresses the non-physical components. Which I'm going to explain a little later in the presentation. So if we look at this Chira, this is based on the work by World Bank and ADB. And this has been made to adapt to the Pakistani conditions. So once this Chira assessment is carried out, we end up with three levels of risks. The high risk, the moderate or the low risk. And these this this characterization of the risk to the project. It helps guides the planners to identify the right mitigation or adaptation strategies. Basically, with Chira, it allows us to go from reactive to proactive approaches as regards the climate planning. So. Let's talk about the objectives of Chida. So basically, it decide, it 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 is designed to answer three key questions. The first one is that what is the quantum of the hazards that will affect a project? The second question is how exposed will that project be to these hazard? Not only in today's today's scenario, but in the future scenario, it means the design life of that project. And the the third one is that how sensitive a project is to the impacts of climate. Which, in other words, we can call it as the vulnerability. So this tool of Chira, it helps identify both the physical and non-physical vulnerabilities of a project. From infrastructure to the institutional gaps and the gender mainstreaming. So Chira builds up, as I said, it builds up on the World Bank screening tools. And it obviously adopts some techniques of scoring from ADB. And then it has been adopted into the Pakistani context. So it means that it is it is in line with the international best practices. And yet it reflects the local conditions in terms of hazards and vulnerabilities. Not only the physical ones, but also the non-physical ones.
The the Chira is basically a five-step process. If we look, we define, we we start with the defining the project's location. The next step in this approach is to identify all the hazards. That will impact a project during its design life. The third step will be assessing the exposure condition of a project. And I must, I must state that this is all done without conducting any analyses. Rather, all this data is, since this is the first and the top-level assessment. So this assessment is carried out based on reports from government agencies. From research articles and expert opinion. So no exact analysis is carried out at this stage. So this process basically ensures that we, the planners. And decision-makers, they have a clear and evidence-based understanding of how the climate climate risks are. And this is very important to evaluate before we actually move ahead with the project. And particularly, it becomes more important in context of developing countries which have struggling economies. So this assessment will actually safeguard the infrastructure as.
So this assessment will actually safeguard the the infrastructure as well as investments. So uh the first step, as I said, in this uh process is to clearly define a project's geographical footprint. Uh so whether it is a district or it is a Taisil or there are specific coordinates for it. This basically allows us to gather uh the relevant hazard data, including uh the historical reports. And the any studies on the future uh projections that have been carried out. Uh knowing exactly where a project is located is very important because uh this will align the project's assessment with the. Uh uh actual regional risks. For example, uh if we talk about a project in the north of Pakistan, so the major hazards would be gloves and seismic risks. While uh if we move towards the coastal areas of Pakistan, so those areas are more vulnerable to the effects of cyclones and storm surges. So this special uh clarity is very important to uh correctly uh profile all the risks. The next step uh as we can see on the slide is uh that of defining the all the hazards uh that can affect a project. So these uh a list of these have been uh given in the document, uh in the handbook. And they include the floods, droughts, heat waves, blocks, cyclones, landslides and many more. Uh if there are any other hazards that uh have the potential to impact a project, then they must also be considered. So it is not a close bound, uh you uh the assessor or the uh evaluator is. Uh allowed to incorporate other hazards that he may deem necessary, uh which have the potential to impact a project. So uh uh then uh as we can see uh on the right side, we have a thematic map that I have adopted from uh NDMA. So it will, with such type of maps will basically allow us to visualize, visualize the risks sold uh across Pakistan. And uh they will actually give us a quick idea of regional vulnerabilities. So this step basically ensures uh that we are not overlooking any hazard. Uh even those that may seem rare or they are emerging in nature. Uh it's about basically building a complete uh picture of the risk uh in a particular area for a particular uh project. So uh once all the hazards are identified, they are listed as given in this table four point three in the uh handbook. So uh once we uh uh identify the hazards. Uh uh we we need to have certain sources to define uh to to get data about those hazards. As I explained earlier, that this step uh of Chira, it does not require an exact analysis to be carried out. Rather, the other sources such as uh PD, PMD, Pakistan Meteorological Department or NDMA, PDMA, GCISC, Thinkhazard etc. All these sources can be uh utilized to gather data about the hazards as they were in the past. Their uh history of the hazards and then uh any project, projection studies that have been carried out. That that uh any projection studies that have been carried out to this effect. And there is a guidance note which I would like to point out, uh which is in continuation with my previous uh discussion is that. Uh research and review locations, uh historical data on climate extremes and hazards. Climate change projections scenarios or any other relevant scientific data while identifying climate extremes and. Uh climate extremes and hazards. So uh we can see that uh this data is uh data acquired from different sources and not uh analyzed by its. So the next step in the Chira process is defining the exposure of a project. So this exposure, basically, uh it refers to how much of the project is likely to be affected by climate hazards. Uh we measure this in terms of spatial coverage, frequency, uh duration and severity of those hazards. Uh Chira uses a scoring system as we can see from zero to four, as it as is given in this uh my uh handbook. And uh this scoring is based on how often an event would occur. Uh from once in fifty years to once in five years. So this uh step basically helps us quantify both the present uh the present exposure as well as the future exposure. And this gives the planners a clear sense of where the vulnerability vulnerabilities lie. And uh how they are going to change uh in general increase uh in the uh time that is coming. Uh to support this analysis, uh Chira provides templates for documenting exposures across multiple hazards. Such as droughts, floods and heat waves that have been uh selected in the first step. So exposure scores then are assigned based on historical data, uh expert opinion and scientific projections. Uh this, i- if we if we located, this is a structured approach and the structured approach. Allows the planners to compare risks across uh different sectors. And uh then prioritize the uh risks and this uh eventually leads to informed decision making. So uh it is basically a practical way uh in which we can translate data into actionable terms. So uh when we talk, when we talk about uh impacts of uh these climate hazards. One type of hazards would be uh the physical uh impacts. So these uh impacts, as we all know that they are related to a damage to the infrastructure such as roads, uh buildings and utilities. Uh as well as their effects on materials, uh their lifespans and operational maintenance requirements. So uh we evaluate both the direct and indirect impacts, uh considering both the uh present and the future scenarios. Uh just like the uh the previous one, uh Chira, it uses a scoring system from zero uh to four. And it is based uh on the percentage of the infrastructure that uh is expected to be affected by a certain hazard. For example, uh if eighty percent of a project's components are vulnerable to flooding. Uh it would receive a high impact score. So this act, this step actually is tailored to help the planners identify critical vulnerabilities. And eventually, based on this identification, uh more resilient design would result. Uh this next slide, it shows us uh uh basically the uh the tables that have been. Uh given uh for uh assessing the physical impacts. As uh we can see on the left side, uh for different sectors such as uh as an example crops. So uh the present impacts are uh provided and they are a description of that is given. And uh in the second part, a transport, so anything that is relevant will come, will become a part of this uh this table. So uh these are, if we if we look at them, these are basically sector-specific templates for different sectors. Uh these templates uh are uh used to uh guide the planners to document the present and the future risks. These scores, uh as once again, uh these scores are based on expert input and uh any data that is available in this regard. And then they help us summarize uh the vulnerabilities in a concise format. Uh one example could be, as we can see from uh these combined effects of crops, uh transport and storage on the right side. So we can see that the transport may have a a lower uh level of uh impact uh at the present. But uh because of the uh future risks due to increasing heat waves, the impact on the transport sector may be may increase with time. So this uh kind of insight is essential for long-term planning and uh risk reduction uh in terms of climate change. Uh then uh besides physical, uh okay, let me, let me add one thing. So based on the expert opinion, uh a summary of all these uh hazards, this first step. Uh this hazard should be written as part of this uh document and that should not be more than five hundred words. So uh besides the physical uh uh impacts of and beyond any infrastructure. Uh Chira also evaluates non-physical impacts. Uh they include the institutional capacity, uh the socioeconomic conditions and governance factors. Uh these soft components have the potential to significantly influence a project's resilience. For example, a region where strong climate policies and trained professionals are available. Uh they uh they will eventually translate into a reduced risk. While uh in areas uh such as the developing countries where we have a limited capacity. Uh the uh risk might rise because of these factors. So and uh Chira, it assigns scores these factors of and these factors eventually translate into the vulnerability of a project. So uh by by uh by the by incorporating this step. Uh it is ensured that resilience is broad spectrum and it is just not, uh it's not just built into structures. But also into uh systems and communities, which is uh uh something that is required. So uh when we look at this first, this slide, we can see that uh the different uh uh. Uh soft components such as policy development, uh long-term strategic planning, capacity building are given in this table. And a spring guideline is provided, uh if a risk is increasing. First, we have to identify whether uh a risk is relevant to that project or not. And uh then if a risk is changing, so then we have a spring guideline, if it is, the risk is increasing, then. It will be scored as two and if it is unchanged, then it is going to be uh scored as one. And by the end of this, uh all these scores uh will be uh sub atas uh will be summed up. And an overall score will be uh uh drafted or uh defined. Uh similarly, uh in in terms of institutional capacity and uh economic and socio-political context. Uh another table is provided in this handbook, which covers uh how the institutional capacity uh will uh affect. Uh these uh uh these factors or how these impacts. So uh each parameter is based on uh, just like the previous one, each parameter is based uh uh. On whether it increases or reduces or uh the risks remain unchanged. So these uh basically, one of the objective of this is to uh help identify gaps in institutional readiness. And uh areas where capacity building might be required. Uh for example, if a project, it lacks emergency planning or data monitoring systems, uh particularly in context of floods. It may score higher on risk, uh so the and another one which uh has a monitoring system and emergency planning available. The risk will be low. So uh uh next one is uh uh the next non-physical impact. Is associated with stakeholder management, uh engagement and gender mainstreaming. And uh the data is uh acquired through these two forms that are provided in the handbook. Once all these uh individual uh risks are calculated, then they are summarized uh and summed up together. Uh and this chart is used for uh to define the overall risk for a project. Uh we can see that uh these uh this this risk is basically a com- combination of exposure. And the impact scores and uh these are uh defined based on uh low risk or no risk. Uh a moderate, moderate risk and high risk. So this is where a decision uh has to be taken, uh where things will go further ahead. So if uh the risk is uh from uh moderate, uh medium or moderate to high. Uh then uh an in-depth analysis uh will be required and that will trigger a Kara. What we, I'll give you the brief about Kara is that uh we reanalyze the natural hazards and some uh extensive. Analysis might be required in terms of the hazards and multi-sector, multi uh uh regional uh uh multi-hazard scenarios have to be created. Uh in the next step, uh the exposure of a project uh to these hazards and their vulnerabilities uh have to be identified. And then based on these decision, appropriate disaster resist uh uh reduction. Uh uh strategies or mitigation or adaptation measures uh will be uh taken up. Uh if we have a look at the uh Chira and we try to critically analyze it. Then uh there are certain challenges that uh come into our observation. So uh we we have noted that Chira is a robust tool that uh has taken from international best standards. But uh there are gaps in uh the hazard databases that we have uh in the developing countries such as Pakistan. And particularly at the local levels, at macro levels, we may have hazard databases, but. At local levels, they are generally missing or may not be very appropriate. Uh then there are many field offices uh that uh do not have high resolution projections. Of or they do not have the technical capacity to conduct detailed assessments. Uh but uh having said uh that and having identified the shortcomings and challenges. There are uh certain very uh good aspects of Chira. For example, uh it encourages uh cross-sector coordination and uh in other uh in another uh perspective. It strengthens the climate governments in the project uh design before actually anything is committed. Uh in terms of the needs that are uh there for implementation of uh Chira. Uh certain training, uh training modules for planning officers and line departments need to be uh developed. And uh then it it has to be integrated with the NDMA and uh other departmental workflows. Uh similarly, the the the, let me finish it up with the benefits of Chira on a positive note. So uh it gives us uh early identification of the risks that are associated with climate change. Uh they would eventually lead to a cost-effective uh projects, uh redesigns, informed decision-making. And they will ensure that all the projects that are filtered through this sieve of Chira. They have long-term resilience and eventually the losses are reduced. Thank you very much from my side. Uh I will now request my colleague, uh Dr. Rafi Dulla, to continue with the presentation. Thank you very much.
Maybe while we're switching speakers quick, uh can I ask if everyone were to uh turn on their cameras so I can take a screenshot? Um for the attendance purposes, uh yeah, if you could do that, I would very much appreciate it. And then let me adjust things so I can see everybody's faces. Give me one second. No, that's not it. Perhaps, um I'm not sure who's speaking right now or controlling the PowerPoint, I should say, could you? Stop sharing screen for a moment so I can uh view everybody's face at the same time? That would be helpful. Oh no, I I figured it out. Never mind. You don't have to do that. Okay, give me one sec. I will. Create a screenshot. Okay.
Let's check.
Perfect. I think that's it. So. I am done interrupting. You can continue.
Connor, uh we are turning off the video because there is a bandwidth issue over here. It is why we are turning off the camera now. Is it okay?
Yes, yes. Feel free to turn off your cameras.
Okay, thank you.
If you need, so I just needed. Yeah, I just needed to see everyone for a second, so.
Or do you, Dr. Rafi?
Assalamualaikum everyone. Thank you Yasser for inviting and laying a strong foundation by assessing climatics through Chira. Now, I will take a step uh further by introducing Kara, the climate adaptation and resilience assessment. Which mainly focuses on transforming, identifying risks and to complete adaptation and resilience strategies. So. Kara process overview. After completing Cheera screening, we move into the next stage. Kara, which stands for climate adaptation and resilience assessment. Kara is an in-depth assessment that goes beyond identifying risks. It mainly focuses on understanding how climate hazard actually affect. Our project systems and the associated communities. In simple words, Cheera tells us where the risks are. While Kara shows us how to respond and how to build resilience in our design. Kara applies. Detail analysis by combining climate projections. Stakeholder consultations and technical evaluation. To identifying practical measures that make a project climate proof. The main objective of Kara are three force. The first one, it aims to identify. Appropriate adaptation options. Which includes both structural and non-structural components. It can reduce the impacts of climate hazard. Second, it seeks to assess. The project vulnerability and adaptive capacity. Meaning, we assess how exposed the project is and how will it can respond to future. Climate shocks. And the third one. Is designed to strengthen the project overall design. So that it become climate resilient, sustainable and capable of standing. Floods, droughts, heat waves, landslide and other hazard throughout its lifetime. Kara process. Is basically based on five major steps. The first one. It begins with a hazard and exposure. Review to understand the frequency and intensity of climate threats. Such as floods, droughts, heat waves, landslides. And the next one and the second one. Vulnerability assessment. Identify the physical, social and institutional factors. That make the project sensitive to the aforementioned hazards. The consequence estimation steps evaluate the potential scale of damage. If such an event occur. And this evaluation step. The likelihood of each hazard is combined with its potential consequences. To compute the overall risk. And the last one. Adaptation planning translates these findings into concrete measures. Which include both structure and non-structural components to enhance the resilience. And ensure that project design, budgeting and implementation fully accountable for climate risk. In this step. We will revisit the Cheera findings to develop a more detailed. And data-driven understanding of the hazards affecting the project area. The assessment goes beyond the initial screening by expanding data sources. Such as historical record, remote sensing observations and climate projection and engaging. Technical experts and key stakeholders. This helps. To refine and quantify the project's exposure to both current and future climate hazards. This step also involves. Estimating the probability and its potential impacts. Of each hazard which provides a strong analytical foundation. For the subsequent vulnerability and risk risk assessment stages. The rubrics. For likelihood likelihood ranges from one to five. It starts from almost certain. Which occur. Very frequently. To derier. Now we will move. To vulnerability assessment, which is the second step. In this step, we focus. To understand why the project or community is at risk. We identify the key physical, environmental, social and institutional determinants. That influence vulnerability such as degraded ecosystem, limited awareness. Or inadequate governance. Each determinant is analyzed using. Quantitative data or qualitative ranking. To find how sensitive the system is to climate hazard and how much adaptive capacity it possesses. These steps provides crucial insight into the factor that increase or reduce vulnerability. Helping to prioritize where adaptation efforts should be directed. Now we will move to the next. Slide. Consequences computation. In this step, we will evaluate. The severity of potential impacts if a climate hazard occurs. It examine how floods, drought, heat waves, landslide. Or other extreme units could affect the project assets, services, communities and the local environment. The assessment typically uses a qualitative scale. Which range from minor. To catastrophic. To describe the extent of damage or disruption that each hazard could cause. The impacts are categorized into four main areas that are environment, economic, social and physical. By estimating consequences in this way. Planner can better understand the scale of potential losses. And identify which risk require the most urgent attention in the adaptation planning phase. Now we will move uh. To the next step, that is risk overall this computation. Risk is the product of probability and consequences. Or its potential impacts. When a hazard occurs. It is classified from low to extreme. Here, we can see a typical. Risk matrix. For example. If we take almost certain and likely which occur most frequently. If their potential impacts are catastrophic or major. Definitely it will fall within very high and high range. And so on. So the one which falls within very high. Range, it needs immediate controls. And so on. So now we will move to the last step. Of the Kara. Which is. Identify adaptation options. So the final step mainly focuses. On identifying and evaluating a range of adaptation measures to reduce the climate risk. And enhance the resilience. These include both structural and non-structural measure. The structural measure includes infrastructure upgradeation, flood protections. Drainage improvements, while the non-structural measures include policy reforms, capacity building and early warning system. Each option is assessed. Under present and future climate condition till the year twenty-one hundred. Ensuring long-term sustainability. This process involves close consultation with stakeholder, technical experts and relevant relevant engineers. To ensure feasibility and community ownership. A multi-criteria analysis is then applied to score and prioritize. The option based on cost effectiveness, cost and co-benefits. Finally, the selected measures are integrated into the project design and implementation plan. Making climate adaptation a core component of development planning. So the one. Which is. Whose cost-benefit ratio is higher is adopted. So now we will move to the next slide that is decision pathways. The Kara process concludes with decision on when to implement adaptation measures. It is summarized into three main decision types. The first one is immediate climate proofing. Which involves action that must be taken right away during the project design phase. These are very urgent. We have to enhance the resilience of our infrastructure by elevating. Infrastructure or improving drainage. In the second one, future climate proofing where the project is designed with built-in flexibility. Allowing for future upgrades or modification as climate is evolved. And the final step. Monitor before investing applies to lower risk scenarios. Where continuous climate monitoring and periodic reviews guide future adaptation investment. Only if a risk level increases. So these are the three decision pathways. Now we will move. To the. Last slide. Overall climate action plan. This is the finest stage of the Kara process. To develop an overall action plan that brings together all the selected. Selected adaptation measure into a clear implementable roadmap. This plan. Outlines what action will be taken. Who is responsible. The specified timeframe and the required resources. It ensures. That the proposed measure directly contribute to climate proofing the project. Addressing both immediate and long-term risks. The action plan should also be integrated and aligned with the PC one and PC two documents. So that adaptation and resilience measure are fully embedded in the project design. Costing and approval process in the essence. This step transforms technical recommendation into actionable commands. That strengthen the project sustainability under changing climate condition. Now we will move uh to the next step. That is. I will uh compute climate risk. For Quahad Greater Water Supply Scheme. Using the Cheera. So basically, Cheera. Is the product of hazard, exposure and vulnerability. Quahad Greater Water Supply Scheme provides drinking uh water. From Mastura River to the resident of the Quahad City. So, the intake structure is located. At the bank of river while. The pipeline traverses. A mountainous area. So, for the set purpose. We need observed data that is precipitation, temperature maximum. And temperature minimum and stream flow record. We also need. Precipitation and temperature record under various share socioeconomic pathways. So now we will identify what kind of hazard. What kind of hazard. Is. Available and dimension area for the proposed structure. So, flowers. And landslide, these two are the most prominent one. So I will take an example of floods. I have calculated, I did calculation for all these four hazards. But due to time constraint, I only I will only extend the flood. So for the set purpose. We will carry out these four steps. Climate projections under various SSB scenarios. Hydrological modeling. Using SWOT model, HEG SMS or any other machine learning or deep learning model. And the third one is flood frequency analysis. And then we will move to the last step that is hydraulic making or rotation making. So these are the four major steps. While assessing the flood hazard for the proposed Greater Water Supply Scheme of Quahad. So first. We will pre-trade the data that is. Downscaling, bias correction, model ranking using explainable AI technique. And then we will move to the multi-model ensemble computation. Using machine learning and deep learning techniques. And then we will move to the next step that is flood frequency analysis. We will compute. The stream flow data for the observed condition and for the two SSB scenario for various return periods. And then, these. Data will be imported. To HECAS model. The intake structure is located here and this is the pipeline which travel along the terrain. This is for the observed condition, this is for SSB two four five and that one is for SSB uh five eight five. So now. We will. Compute the hazard. I have taken only two components. Of the water supply scheme. The first one is intake structure and the second one is pipeline. Which runs along the Mastura River from zero to two kilometer. And then it starts traveling towards the main city. In the here terrain. So here I have computed the flood depth. These are the values. The first one is for the observed condition. The second one is uh for SSB two four five and the third one is for SSB five eight five. So, here it is as per the rubrics. I have prepared for this process. The risk increases from the observed condition to the SSB toward to the SSB scenarios from medium to very, from high to very high. Now, we will move to the next step that is exposure assessment metrics. Again, I have considered the same two components that is intake structure and pipeline. For this, I have considered only two parameter length of the pipeline are the intake structure in percentage and flood zone and the proximity of intake structure and pipeline to the river. So, again, I have calculated these values using GAS tool. So, for the observed condition for SSB two four five and SSB five eight five, now I have multiplied these two columns. It will give us the exposure score. And then I have normalized because I have prepared rubrics for the said purpose. So, here again, we can see that the risk increases from the observed to the future SSB scenarios. So, now we have calculated these two matrices, hazard matrix and exposure matrix. Now, we will move to the last one that is risk matrix. So, I have borrowed the hazard score from the hazard matrix and exposure score from the exposure risk matrix and then I have multiplied these two. It will give us the risk score. So, this is the risk score then I have normalized as per the rubrics I have prepared. So, here we can see that the risk increases from the observed to the SSB scenarios and the risk basically lies from medium to extremely high. So, this is basically the risk matrix, the physical risk matrix that I have computed based on the Chira process. Now, I will move to the next one that is Kara. And I did that for the SWOT district, SWOT district, Karak, Deere and the Jahan districts. This assessment evaluate the flood risk for different type of infrastructure. In the aforementioned districts, the damages data was extracted from inundation maps where the flood damage depth function and the asset value are adopted from JRC report of the European Union. This is basically a global dataset, flood day and damage function data. So, one can confidently use this data for their country. It's available for all countries. One can extract the depth damage function as well as the asset values. So, a risk is basically here, the product of probability of any event multiplied by its potential consequences. So, first, I have computed the probability matrix for various depths because the damage function is for the JRC report is available for various depths. So, here I have computed it for nine minute, four meter depth, two point eight two and so on. Again, I have used hydrological models and HECAS model to carry out this analysis. So, now I will move to the potential impacts or damages of the floods. I have prepared this matrix. I have, I have overlaid the inundation map over the OSM data in QGIS. I have extracted various infrastructure data like residential, commercial or any other infrastructure. I have adopted damage function for various depths and the asset values. And then I have multiplied it. As a result, I got this matrix. So, these are basically the potential impacts or damages caused by the flood in that particular districts. Now, I will move to the next slide. That is climate risk. This is basically the combination of flood probability and its potential consequences. So, as I have computed these two matrix, this one, this one and now I have combined these two. For regard, these values in Euro is for the twenty ten regard using the JRC report of the European Union. And then I have normalized the these metrics using minimum maximum scaling technique. So, here one can see this SWOT and lower have higher risks in comparison to the other districts. So, I have, basically I have considered the whole district infrastructure. Now, I have computed the physical risk for both processes. So, if you have any project, you will restrict to your analysis to that particular project. So, this is all about the Kara process, Kara process, application of Chira and application of Kara. So, thank you very much. Now, the house is open for question and answer.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rafid. That was really nice hearing about Kara and the scoring that you have done. What we will be doing at this stage, we have got some questions through the chat. First, I'll in proper order, I'll start question number one from Ms. Sabah Rafi. The question is, why do most executing agencies fail to submit PC four and PC five reports to the planning and development department despite mandatory requirements? And what institutional or procedural reforms could help ensure their timely preparation, submission and utilization for evidence-based planning and accountability? So, the answer to this question is, the answer basically lies within this question because of lack of accountability and there are no proper procedures laid down in terms of accountability that if the PC three, PC four and PC five are not submitted. So, it's basically an open-ended situation. So, that is why we, we really need reforms and we need to improve our institutional procedures so that the PC four and PC five reports are submitted. And definitely, they will help us in evidence-based planning in future projects. The other thing, the other question that you have mentioned, why it is limited to the projects of PC ones backed by donor funds? Now, the thing is that the government agencies, as I mentioned, they don't go after accountability that much as, for example, we have a donor-funded project from some UN agencies or from other donor agencies like USAID. So, what they do, they properly follow these procedures and or government-owned agencies, they don't follow these procedures. There is another question from Mudassar Hussain. In CIME, the progress of climate projects is tracked and measured. What are the climate projects? All development projects planned and appraised in the country are specific project. So, the answer to this question is that sometimes we consider that a project is a climate project because it is vulnerable to floods and maybe if that is vulnerable to droughts or heat waves. So, we consider that as a climate project or maybe a project which is which is capable of mitigation measures. So, it's not like these projects are the only climate projects. For example, if I'll give you an example of a building. Let's say, a school building which might not be vulnerable to floods, which might not be vulnerable to heat waves or droughts, but because it is impacting the environment negatively. So, are maybe, I mean that we are paving surfaces over there, we are reducing the groundwater recharge over there. So, this project itself, it will not be impacted by the adverse effects of climate change, but this project itself will contribute to the effects of climate change. So, we do need to take some adaptation measures. For example, if the groundwater recharge is affected by this project, so what we can do is, we can, we can, we can enhance a proportionate groundwater recharge in this project. The other thing is paving or natural surfaces, what they do, they, they also contribute to the urban flooding. So, we have to introduce some sort of retention ponds, detention ponds like these to lessen the impacts of urban flooding. So, these two questions were asked during my session. Now, the other questions, the other questions, I'll request Professor Badrashi to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fayaz. The first question was from Ms. Shama Ilyas and she asked how does the planning commission ensures compliance? And what happens in case of non-compliance? So, compliance basically is ensured because Chira screening is mandatory at the PCN and PC one levels. And if the risk identified or calculated is high, then certain actions are required, such as you can change the location of the project or go for a climate resilient design. There is an option to delay the execution of the project and obviously then there are Kara and CMA which will be required for an in-depth analysis and with proceeding with the project. So, the compliance in terms of Chira is ensured because this is a step which is mandatory and no project can get funding or approval before this step is carried out. I hope that answers the question. The second questions, second question is from Mr. Mudassar Hussain. And he had asked that since Chira provides us with an initial assessment of climate and hazard risks, how are ongoing projects that have a high potential for climate and hazard risks such as damsides where continuous blasting is carried out which pose a potential climate risks being monitored? Is there any tool for ongoing projects? So, in my opinion, Chira, it does not particularly address the ongoing projects. This is a top-level decision-making tool for the planners and managers. However, if, if we talk about the ongoing projects, they can be tracked by using sign guidelines, which is a tool for monitoring climate actions and vulnerability actions. And these four tools are part of this handbook. So, no, my answer is that no, there is no particular address for, address for ongoing projects. However, one of the tools of this handbook that is the sign can be used for monitoring of projects. Then, there is another interesting question from Ms. Sabah Rafi. And she had asked, who will fill historical data or exposure value from government's annual reports? Isn't it embedded in the Chira or departments have to that themselves? So, as I mentioned during my presentation that since this is a top-level decision-making tool, then the historical data has not to be, it has to be acquired from technical reports, scientific studies and expert opinion. The departments do have to do that themselves. We must understand that Chira is for high, high-level or high-end professionals who know their job and they know how to characterize hazards in a particular area and they have a very good understanding of the risks that are associated. So, the departments do have to do that themselves. One last question is again from Ms. Shama Ilyas. In areas where limited hazard data and technical capacity, how can Chira still ensure effective risk identification and climate resilient project design? So, this is one of the bottlenecks that I had identified in my presentation. And this becomes more important so in case of developing countries where data generally is scarce and interdepartmental data sharing is not very effective. And particularly, not only the historical data, but there are very few studies which address the projections of these hazards in a future timeframe. So, that is a bottleneck, but the silver lining or the bright side of this is that the scientific data is getting populated at a very good rate in the form of multi-hazard analyses that are carried out. And particularly so in regions where high risks and high losses have been observed. So, those areas have been the focus of study for multi-hazard analyses. And since the database is growing at a good rate, I believe that in the near future, we are going to be in a position to be able to efficiently and accurately characterize the hazards that form the backbone of the Chira process. Thank you very much from my side. I would request my colleague, Dr. Afikullah, to address his part of the question.
Thank you, Yasser. Now, I will address, I have got several question. I will give the answer of this particular question. The first question is, Chira is entirely based on already available data of similar projects obtained through project studies? So, yes, Chira is primarily based on existing data and information from similar projects obtained through previous project studies. The next question is, Chira and Kara seem to be highly technical in nature. How are planning or accounting officers? How are planning or accounting officers supposed to perform this without specialized expertise? Chira, basically Chira and Kara are designed with user friendly interfaces. Which allows planning or accounting officer to use them effectively without specialized expertise. While still providing the option for technical support when needed. So the next question is, in case there is change of scope of the project. Then there will be reassessment of risks or what will be the worth of initial assessment? The answer is, if the project scope changes, a reassessment of risk is required. As the initial assessment become partially outdated and may no longer reflect the new condition or exposure. So the last question. Also N D M A has developed a localized network, why don't we just use it and utilize it local level? An automated decision support system would be more helpful. So the answer is, there's a valid point and N D M A network provides a strong localized. Foundation however Chira and Kara complement it by integrating climate risk adaptation and resilient aspects. Combining that occurs localized data with an automated decision support system under Chira Kara would make. The risk assessment and adaptation planning more comprehensive and actionable.
Thank you, Dr. Rafid. So the questions that we received in the chat box. I hope all the questions have been answered, so far there is no question in the chat box which is unanswered. So, so that said from our side, yes please, Connor. Or do you please?
Yep, I think I saw someone with a hand raised, Shasma. If I'm pronouncing that correctly, if you're, you still have a question, feel free to ask. Yeah, and then I can take over.
Hello, good afternoon, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good, okay, thank you so much for such detailed presentation. And especially, I really appreciate that you guys introduced this Chira and Kara processes. Given the recent situation and the recent climate hazards in Pakistan. Well, I'm, while I'm fairly new to this policy and the systematic procedures that involve. In clim, climate assessment or hazard assessment, I have a question, it's, it might be very basic. But when you were talking about P C one and two. I noticed, or I'm sorry if I missed this, but I noticed that there is no mention of E I A, environmental impact assessment. For the products, so I'm not sure if it is included or is it something that's, that might not be relevant to you guys? So that is my first question. And my second point would be about the hazard, like for example, you talked about. I, I saw that the buying hazard is basically based on the scoring. So I, I wonder maybe it's anxiety driven, but I wonder if it could be impacted by personal perception of the hazard? Or like, but in towards the end, you talked about modeling. You talked about hydro, hydrological modeling and that, that is one point that I, I think. That could, for example, beat the personal perception. In, in terms like, like inaccurate, inaccurate assessment of hazard. So but for, but for modeling, we need data, but as you know, Pakistan does not have. Like detailed historical data, maybe some regions do have, but a, a lot of regions lack, lack that. Data, so I, I was wondering how, how do you deal with that? What, what is the way forward and about my first question, if you have something to say about that as well and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shasma. As far as your first question is concerned, that is about the E I A. So without even this Chira and Kara, the P C pro farmers have already these environmental impact assessment. If you are doing, if you are submitting a P C one, so this environmental. Impact assessment report is an integral part of that P C one. So thi, this is the first part of your question, I hope that is answered. As far as your second part of your question is concerned. So the, the, the thing is, there are some parameters in this Chira and Kara. Which of course you are, you are very much right, that they, they depend on the perception of, of the person. They are subjective. And but, but it is mentioned in the, in, in this handbook that it is a live document. And there as far as we have studied and used this document, here are quite some parameters. Which needs to be improved and the, the, the bottleneck is, yes, there are quite some parameters. Which are quite subjective and are based on the perception of the person who is assisting it. My colleague, Professor Badrashi wants to add to this as well.
The question is very valid and that's something that I foresee. But we have to understand that the Chira analysis has to be carried by experts. And they are generally have information and idea about the hazards that exist in that area. And once, if, if sufficient information is not available, then this would require that Kara be involved. And Kara will actually go for a detailed assessment, so if projects particularly those with high impact and high costs. Then obviously detailed assessments have to be carried out, details, detailed studies have to be executed. But at Chira level, the expertise of that particular expert has to come into play.
So. Is there any other question? From our side, it's. Or, or do you, Connor?
Okay, thank you all for one, the very informative webinar on this topic. It's, yeah, seems like a lot of, a lot of material, a lot of details and a lot of effort went into. Creating this for all of us, so yeah, very much appreciated. As I mentioned before, all of this material as well as the recording will be available online. Please follow us on the Pax R N LinkedIn page for more details on that. Otherwise, if you want a link to that webpage where you can download the materials, feel free to email us. At the, the, the email address that I posted here. I also posted a link for the survey, so it's very short, just a few minutes. And it would be greatly appreciated if people could fill that out just for our. To better, you know, webinars in the future on our end, so. With that, I think I can close the meeting and yeah, thank you all for joining and I hope to see you all again in the near future. So thank you again, bye.
Thank you.